So Jim's on?
I didn't see him there. He's talking to me and he said he was going to get on.
This is crazy.
Yeah, it all shook. Nah, I mean, I have to. We have a classification.
Well, I'm happy to see you.
Yeah. I ate a little something.
They couldn't get any, in their reasons that we're not going to shoot up.
Good, you're doing okay?
Hang it in there. What's the matter? Yeah, I sent John, talked to anybody?
You ready for the party?
Yeah, let's talk later. Yep, we're ready.
Time is 7:00 PM. A call to order of City of Torrington Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for July 21st, 2021. This evening, attendances by Zoom or in person at City Hall Auditorium, Room 218, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Instructions for Zoom are available online at www.torringtonct.org/zoom. Agenda item number two, attendance serving out of commission this evening, in person, Starly Arias, Greg Parisino, Don Greco, myself, Greg Neely. Also in attendance is our city planner, Martin Connor. Serving remotely this evening is Diane Carroll and Donovan Riley. Excuse me?
And Tom Tellman.
Tom, thank you, Tom. Moving on to agenda item number three, minutes for approval for June 23rd, 21. Do you have a motion, please?
Make the motion, move minutes.
Thank you, Donna. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Donovan. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I abstain. Tom Tellman.
Diane Carroll abstains.
Thank you, Diane. Greg Parisino abstains. All those in favor? I so moved. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number four. The time is 7:01. Public hearing scheduled for 7:00 PM, Wednesday, July 21st, 2021, City Hall Auditorium, Room 218, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. I'm going to jump out of order just for a minute here. Moving on to agenda, public hearing meeting, special exception 29-09, site plan 1378, applicant alum Realty Inc., location 861 New Arlington Road. Proposal is for gasoline sales, install gasoline dispensers, canopy parking and landscaping, building and facade modifications. This application is going to be tabled this evening. Anyone here in the audience for that? It's not going to be heard this evening. That meeting will take place on August 18th, 2021. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number four, A, resubdivision special exception 21-06, applicant Allied Engineering Associates, Incorporated. Location 501 to 504 Essex Court, Assessor Map, 234 Block 002, Lot 006. Proposal, resubdivision, two lots and multifamily residence in the R6 Zone. Serving out of commission this evening is Starly Arias, Greg Parisino, Don Greco, myself, Greg Neely. Also in attendance is our city planner, Martin Connor, in person. Serving remotely is Diane Carroll, Donovan Riley, and Tom Tellman.
Greg, Jim Bobinski's on, too.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening. Do we have a legal notice, Marty?
Yes, Commissioner, Donna is going to read that, please.
Thank you.
Commissioner Greco.
Ready? The Planning and Zoning Commission has scheduled a public hearing on the following applications on Wednesday, July 21st, 2021, beginning at 7:00 PM in the City Hall Auditorium, Room 218, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Resubdivision and special exception 21-06, applicant Allied Engineering Associates, Inc., location 501-504 Essex Court, Assessor Map 234, Block 002, Lot 006. Proposal, resubdivision, two lots and multifamily residence in the R6 Zone. Time of hearing, 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Commissioner Greco. Is the applicant in attendance?
Yes, sir.
State your name and address for the record, please.
For the record, my name is George Johansson from Allied Engineering Associates in North Canaan, Connecticut.
Good, thank you. Were the notices sent and the sign posted?
Yes, sir.
All right. Very good, George. Thank you. All right, go ahead. When are you ready, please?
Okay. This property is part of the Squire Hill condominium complex. This application, as stated, is for resubdivision, special exception approval. Basically, the property is, right now, consists of a four-unit multifamily structure on a 23 and a half acre property. The building is connected to public utilities, water and sewer. The proposal is to subdivide the 23 and a half acre lot into two lots of 23.49 and 0.911 acres. The smaller lot will contain the existing multifamily building. The larger lot is, we're proposing a plan showing it's feasible to develop a four-unit multifamily building on there. However, the construction is not going to be happening in the near future, as far as we know. The proposed building will also tie into public utilities, water and sewer as well. We received comments from staff regarding the plans, and we've addressed all of these comments. There were also some recommendations made by staff members, and we have no problem following those recommendations. If you'd like, I can go over the detail of the plans, but I believe you will have the plans.
Why don't you run through it briefly, George? Thank you.
So this is the large piece we're talking about here. This is the small lot that's being broken out. Okay? Sheet C2, this is the area where the road goes up. This is the area we're talking about. Now, there's nothing here. This electric meter from the corner, shed over top of the water tank, and rail over here. So, proposal is, I'm right off the end of Queens Road, man, we're leaving the shed with the tank, the water tank. Proposal is for this four-unit building, basically the same building that is up on the smaller lot, with grading, comes out, ties in, stormwater with underground detention to take care of any increase in runoff. The existing sewer was a little bit of a tricky issue. We were tying into a manhole further down the road, which was labeled SMH, and we assumed it was sanitary, but it turns out it wasn't. I went to uncover it, and it was a storm sewer. So I went through all the records online, and I found plans from 1977, 78, when these buildings here were built, and they were as built of the building, but not as built of the sewer, but they showed the sewer. So we went back out again, and all the manholes are covered. So I put them in based on the old plans showed tying into this one, assuming the fourth were inverted. Here, however, when the construction is actually planned, we'll have to verify the location and depth of that manhole. We have no parking for the building. We have a handicap ramp, so these two units can be handicapped accessible. And then, grading around, we're showing landscaping. We didn't do a detailed landscaping plan because this is feasibility. However, we have enough of the trees and plants that are required for the regulations.
This is right at the top of the project, George. Excuse me? This is right at the top of the...
This is, right here.
Okay.
So this is, everybody knows where the hotel property is.
Yeah, okay.
The road comes up and around, and then goes back up. So it's about halfway towards the top of the hill. This is the basic shape of the building. Near the elevation of the building. Anybody have any questions?
Any commissioners have any comments or questions at this time?
So will these mirror the existing buildings that they are now, or just be, like Squire Hill, like the condo?
Will they be similar?
Will they, yeah.
Yes. This building that we're showing the feasibility for is the exact same building that's up on this lot.
Okay.
That's why the plan for junior.
Okay.
Anyone else? Anybody via Zoom? Any questions at this time?
No, sir.
No. Marty, you have a memo, please?
Yes, I have a memo to the commission dated July 13th, 2021. Allied Engineering Associates, Inc., or Princess Properties LLC, has applied for a two-lot resubdivision and a special exception approval to construct a four-unit multifamily on the new proposed lot. The property is located within Squire Hill condo complex. It's owned by Princess Properties LLC, and is 23.49 acres in size. The purpose of the resubdivision is so the property owner can sell the existing four-unit multifamily dwelling at 501 to 504 Essex Court with 0.911 acres of land. This property will be known as parcel A. The remaining 22.59 acres with the proposed four-unit multifamily dwelling will become parcel B in the resubdivision. A special exception is, application has been filed to demonstrate that the remaining land in parcel B can support a four-unit multifamily dwelling. They have no immediate plans for construction of the multifamily dwelling on parcel B, but need to demonstrate that parcel B will be build, a buildable lot. The property is located in the R6 residential zone, where multifamily dwellings are permitted with special exception slash site plan approval per Section 3.1, subsection 1.30, and Section 6.8 of the regulations. A public hearing is required for both the resubdivision and the special exception applications. The applicant has requested that the public hearings on the two applications be held concurrently. The applicant has submitted a resubdivision plan, proposed, titled Proposed Resubdivision Plan Prepared for Princess Properties LLC, Queens Road, Torrington, Connecticut, Sheet C1 through C3, by Allied Engineering Associates, Inc., dated 6/21, and architectural plans titled New Building Squire Hill Condominiums, Newfield Road, and Off Winstead Road, Torrington, Connecticut, by John Martin Associates, dated December 1st, 2003, Sheets A8. The two parcels are serviced by the existing private road system within the Squire Hill complex, Queens Road and Essex Court. Public water and sewer is available to service both the existing building on parcel A and the proposed building on parcel B. In reviewing the application, I have the following comments. The property is in the R6 Zone, and the existing and proposed uses are multifamily dwellings, one four-unit multifamily dwelling on each lot. The minimum lot size for a multifamily dwelling in the R6 Zone is 9,000 square feet. Both parcels A and B exceed the minimum lot size. Two, the existing building on parcel A and the proposed building on parcel B meet the minimum setbacks, comply with the maximum units per acre, and with maximum building length. A zoning table for each lot is located on Sheet C1 to demonstrate conformance to the zoning regulations. Three, the multifamily unit proposed for parcel B shown on Sheets C1 through C3 demonstrates that parcel B is buildable and that there is a location on this lot where a four-unit multifamily dwelling can be located and comply with the zoning regulations. Four, an approval block needs to be added to the resubdivision map, Sheet C1. Special exception. The applicant has provided architectural elevations for the proposed multifamily unit on parcel B that matches the existing multifamily dwelling on parcel A, 501 to 504 Essex Court. The site plan Sheets C2 and C3 are conceptual plans to demonstrate that parcel B is a buildable lot and can support a four-unit multifamily dwelling. A full site development plan will be required that address, addresses staff comments prior to issuance of a zoning permit. The site plan will require a commission approval. Three, the proposed and existing multifamily dwelling complies with the specific requirements of Section 4.1.9 of the regulations. Four, in my opinion, the application complies with the general requirements of Section 8-2 and the special exception approval. An approval block needs to be added to the conceptual site plan Sheets C2 and C3. Staff, other staff comments. Fire Marshal Ed DeSeta, in a letter to me dated 6/25/21, indicated the building should be equipped with a complete and compliant fire protection system compatible with new construction. Torrington makes use of lock boxes to allow quick access by firefighters in time of an alarm without causing damage. If not already in existence, a lock box should be installed on the exterior of the building near the main door. The fire department will use its secure master keys to open the box and allow the building owner to leave appropriate building access keys inside. This eliminates any delay in entering the building or waiting for a key holder to arrive in the middle of the night. The building and area must comply with all required building and electrical codes and will be inspected by the fire marshal for compliance with the life safety code prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy and annually thereafter. Police traffic, no comments were received from Sergeant Boldus' Police Traffic Unit. Inland Wetlands, lighting and landscaping, Jeremy Leifert, Assistant City Planner, in an email memo to me dated 6/31 indicated, I reviewed the information submitted for the proposed resubdivision and multifamily feasibility plan for 501 to 504 Essex Court. It is noted that this site plan is a building feasibility plan only and not a final development plan. I offer the following comments. Wetlands, there are no regulated wetlands or watercourses in the vicinity of the subject properties that would require wetlands review for this proposal. Therefore, no wetlands permits are required prior to this application. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report. Landscaping, proposed tree and shrub numbers in locations are shown on Plan Sheet 3 are acceptable for this feasibility plan. Future plans submitted for development should be revised and included chart with a listing of proposed tree and shrub species to be planted in these locations. Lighting, only two new lights shown on, proposed light on Plan C3, C3, are shown near the proposed parking lot on the plan. No lighting on the building is proposed. Future final site development plan should show the style details of lighting and a photometric plan for any other new lighting. All lighting fixtures and exterior lighting proposals shall be full cutoff fixtures in accordance with other requirements of Section 5.17 of the zoning regulations. Signage, there are no new signs proposed as part of this application in this feasibility plan. A sign permit shall be required before installing any new signage in accordance with Section 515 of the zoning regulations. Any signage over 32 square feet shall also require site plan approval. Engineering review, Paul Constance, P.E., Assistant Public Works Director/City Engineer, in an email memo to me dated 6/15/21 indicated, Run, the proposed building is not shown on the same location on C1 as C3. The proposed CBs and manholes on C3 also appear on C2. The grading on C3 plan shows an FFD of 867. It's unclear how the walkways to each unit will be graded, since the parking lot grades range from 867 at the accessible space to 864 at CB1, to 854 in the rear SE corner, 13-foot difference, and 858 in the rear southwest corner, nine-foot difference. Show proposed spock grades at all doors and walkways and curb cuts. Show parking lot grading for the accessible space meeting ADA requirements. The east and west elevations on A8 show the rear units higher, whereas C3 show grading lower in the rear by 10 feet, and ground is sloping steeply downward. Please confirm. Show the accessible curb cut. Show handicap symbol in the circle in the accessible parking space and dimensions. Show designed pipe slopes on sanitary sewer pipe runs, and show invert in elevation at existing manhole. Six, show the driveway and parking lot dimensions. Seven, show the diameter of the proposed storm manholes 1 and 2. For storm manhole 1, show the invert for a 24-inch pipe. Show slope for a 24-inch perforated pipe. WPCA, Ray Drew Administrator, Water Push Control Authority, in an email memo dated 6/25/21, indicated applicant shall submit application for a sanitary sewer discharge permit. Capacity reserve fee shall be paid in an amount of $14,000. All sanitary sewer lines shall be tested and inspected prior to backfill. All manholes shall have installed minimum 12-inch infiltration shield. Manhole cover shall be labeled private sewer. C as well. Plans shall note sewer lateral to the point of connection to the city main shall be noted private sewer. D, all laterals, manholes shall comply and pass CCTV and pressure testing according to WPCA regulations. Testing shall be certified and submitted to WPCA. Inspection of the sewer laterals and testing shall be scheduled with the Department of Engineering at a minimum of 24 hours in advance. Infrastructure shall be inspected prior to backfilling. Copies of CCTV inspections shall be submitted to WPCA in a digital format. All lines shall be constructed SDR 35 sewer pipe. All sewer lines shall meet the City of Torrington specifications. Sewer laterals shall clearly be marked private sewer on final as-built plans. Copies of all testing shall be submitted to WPCA. Copies shall be in a digital format. Waste water discharge shall meet the City Torrington/WPCA local discharge limits. Operations shall be best management practices to minimize the use of phosphate-containing cleaners and detergents. Submit copies of any federal and state permits related to wastewater discharges. Applicants shall submit one copy of the final record drawings to WPCA. Copies shall be in digital format. Conclusion, I recommend the commission approve the two-lot resubdivision. I also recommend the commission approve the special exception application for a four-unit multifamily dwelling on parcel B, making or finding the special exception application for the proposed four-unit multifamily dwelling on parcel B meets the general and specific standards for special exception approval with the following conditions. Prior to obtaining a zoning permit for construction of a multifamily dwelling on parcel B, the applicant shall submit a revised site development plan for the Planning and Zoning Commission approval that (a) addresses the comments from Assistant City Planner Jeremy Leifert contained in his memo to the city planner dated 6/30/21; (b) addresses the comments from Assistant Public Works Director/City Engineer in an email memo to the city planner dated 6/15/21; (c) addresses the comments from Public Works Director Ray Drew in a memo to the city planner dated 6/25/21; and (two) is recommended the applicant follow the advice of Fire Marshal Ed DeSeta contained in his letter to the city planner dated 6/25/21.
Thank you, Marty. Any commissioners have any comments or questions at this point?
Greg, I do. Diane Carroll.
Thank you, Diane. Go ahead.
So this four-unit multifamily, is that going to be under the Phase 3 Association at Squire Hill at all?
My name is Charles Ebersaw. I happen to represent the proposed purchaser of the .9 acre lot that has an existing building on it. Just to make this clear to anybody who's here from Squire Hill, this property is not part technically of the Squire Hill associations. This property owned by Mr. Dr. Katheria, under the name Princess Properties, is outside technically of the condominium association. It's a freestanding piece of property of 23 and a half acres. So this new building will not be part of the Squire, any Squire Hill associations. If it is ever built, it will be up to the then person who owns it to decide whether they want to make it a common interest community.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners have any comments or questions before I go to the public?
I'm a little bit confused by the application. I mean, we're not doing a site plan approval here. We're doing a special exception.
Correct.
But it's predicated on what you're showing. So this might be an as-built project, meaning this is what you're proposing. To make the, to, as you're presenting the case, you're saying, you know, we're showing you that you can actually build on this piece. And so what I'm confused is, we went through an awful lot of, you know, review of this. However, there's no guarantee that this exact building might be the one that you're proposing at the end of the day.
That's correct. Well, it'd have to go back to us for safety.
I agree. I understand. I'm just saying, we just went through an awful lot of work on something that is not even necessarily going to happen.
It's to show that it can support a building of that size and type.
But it is.
Conceptual.
So, yeah. Commissioner, it's like any resubdivision that we have, where they show that, you know, typically it's a single-family subdivision we have in front of us, and they have to demonstrate that the lots can support, you know, a house, you know, they, either a septic or sewer connection, some kind of water supply, meet all the setbacks. They aren't able to really sell the unit at the top that they want to sell with the almost one acre of land unless they could demonstrate that the remaining 20, almost 22 acres could support a multifamily dwelling.
Everybody unmuted remotely?
All right, I'll go to the public. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? You need to come forward and state your name and address for the record, please. Being done, would anyone like to speak in opposition of this application? You need to come forward and state your name and address for the record, one at a time, please.
Hello, my name is David Bender. I live in Squire Hill Park 3 on...
I live in Squire Hill Park Three on Essex Court, and that building and parking lot is directly above my house where I live, and there is nothing on there that demonstrates anything of, it's just a rock wall that goes up and then the property. So right where the parking lot is, if somebody hits the wrong pedal or something, it's going to go right down into my house. There's nothing blocking that. There's no natural barrier or anything. It's just the land comes over and then goes down. That's my biggest concern.
Is there property yet on the map?
This building here, and the building, this is where we go up here, the parking lot, right here. So if anything happens, it's going down right in, right here where my kids play.
There's no new parking lot. Existing parking lots can stay where it is.
No, no, on the plan. You guys have a parking lot built directly in front.
No, let's stop here.
So this is, what is this?
This is an existing building, and they're breaking out this much property to go with that building. So this is to show that it's possible to build a building on the remainder.
So all the way down here?
Yes.
Okay. So what road is this here?
Queens Road, basically.
George, could you please orientate people as to where the, you're showing the conceptual area where a building could be built. They might, they might know if you tell them about where there's a shed.
Take a moment, turn that around, even to the public, please.
A shed in the area?
You come off of East Main Street, or Main Street down here. The road comes up, wraps around, comes back around, comes back up this way. Right here, there's kind of a weird little split where there's some, and we come up here, and then it takes a left. There's a trash enclosure right here, right in the corner, and there's a big shed over a water tank here. And then you take a left, you go back up here, and then you wrap around to where this building is. It's just a neighborhood. So it's right at the bend here. It's kind of a sharp left. There's a couple of, like six parking spaces on the right side, and there's just a little gurk area in there. That's where we're showing feasibility for.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes. When I was looking on the computer, it showed this here, and I thought this was, and then it showed another page, and I thought that was the building itself.
No, this is the feasibility document.
Would anyone else like to speak in opposition of this application?
Shelley Noriega, 7100 Court. With all due respect to the commission, I, as resident of Hunter Court, am familiar with the area because I live there. If you don't have a reason to drive up there, you probably don't even know that there's a three-lane, Hunter Court, a Queens Road, and an Essex Court. Have any of you ever driven up there?
Yes.
Long time ago.
Okay, long time ago. The construction that was done by Princess Properties for the three buildings that they constructed put severe wear and tear on our roads. Privately owned roads that we pay to maintain. City of Torrington does nothing for us. More construction vehicles, more vehicles, period, are only going to decay those roads even further. We've had sinkholes, and we're pretty sure one developed because of the construction equipment that was on the site for Princess Properties' three first buildings. There are four associations at Squire Hill. Squire Hill One, three-lane. Squire Hill Two, Hunter Court, Queens Road. Squire Hill Three, Essex Court. Princess Properties, Essex Court. Essex Court is split into two associations. If this building is being put on Queens Road, that's Squire Hill Two property, just as much as it's Princess Property. It's our road that he's got to get up to put this building on. Who's going to pay for the wear and tear on the road? Who's going to pay for the runoff from the construction, equipment, materials, new sewage, water, electricity? We pay for electricity up there. We pay for everything. It's all private. The integrity of that neighborhood is going to be compromised by another building that's built in the same quality as the ones that they built are. They're on ledge. They couldn't get COs for them for years. They tried to sell them, no one would buy them. Minish had to rent them. Are we going to have another dump, another dumpy-ass building that looks like the three that are already there at the top of Queens Road, technically on Squire Hill Two property? This has to be reviewed a little more carefully, maybe? And I'm not criticizing anyone because I have no idea what you guys do. All I know is that this is not feasible to the hundred-and-eighty unit owners that are up there that pay to maintain everything for him to come in there and say, "I'm going to plant a building, and I'm going to use your roads to do it." So he has to access three-lane and Queens Road to get to the site where he wants to propose this building. It was also stated that it's in the works, but there's no clear definite date or, you know. So what does that mean? Is he just selling off this property to someone else so that someday they can come in and build something? And then you guys have to go through all of this again, and so do we? Why would he go through all of that if he doesn't have a definitive time and date to put a building on this property? Seems like a great time to build and to rent, but what's his real plan? This just seems a little shady.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak in opposition of this application? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Lorraine Pesky, 455 Cardinal Circle in Torrington. My husband and his sisters are co-owners of a condo on Queens, on Hunter Court. I agree with Shelley in terms of the access to this piece. When and if construction ever happens, that road is private road, and the condo association owners maintain that road, and it's in kind of tough shape now, and it would take a lot of money to fix it. So they've been patching it over the years together. If this were to be constructed and construction vehicles were to go on that road, they would never, would never be able to do it, to withstand it. And whether it's tomorrow or a number of years from now, it's still a private road, and for another private person to use that road to rub construction vehicles up is not acceptable, I don't think.
Thank you.
My name is Scott Robbins. I live at 82G Hunter Court. A lot of my other original issues have already been mentioned. One of the biggest things that's come into my mind just now, this is a separate piece of property. It's not part of Squire Hill. We've already, it's already been stipulated to that. To get to this property, they have to ride, they have to drive, as has been said, up our roads, the ones that we pay for, we maintain, the city doesn't do anything with them, they're not public access. Where are they, again, the same thing. Where are the equipment going to come up there to chew up our roads to get into this place? Where are the tenants going to get in except by going on our roads? Where is the water, the sewer, and the electric going to go to and from except, from what I hear, planning to use off our pre-existing attachments? That just doesn't sound right. That's, if that's private property, if I build my house next to your house, I can't tap into your sewer, to your water, to your electric. It's not, that's not how it's done. This is two pieces of property. Their space should be getting their own thing and/or getting approval to you do that from with Squire Hill condo groups. And I just don't see it, it's, that's the way to go. I can see what they're, what they want to do. They have a thirty, almost a twenty-three acre piece of property. They need to prove that somewhere on that property is a buildable lot. The lot is almost non-buildable completely. That's why they're, we're stuck at this particular location because the rest of it is either rock cliff, drop-offs, completely high forest peaks, outcroppings, everything. It's not legitimately too much, really much a buildable place anywhere. They're trying to find the only place they can on that piece of property to put out, to justify where they could put a place so they could split up the properties and sell off the, of the lot. That's all I'm seeing it. I don't think it's the way to go. I don't think it's appropriate. I don't think they're doing it the right, I don't think they're doing it right at all. Thank you.
Hello. So I don't want, my name is Karen Simons, and I live on Queens Road. And basically, they've said every objection already that I have as an owner up there, but I just wanted to come up and state my objection to it for all of the same reasons, especially the lot up at Queens Road. They already have Essex Court is already up in the back, but up at the top of Queens, it is, it's the sewer, it's the roads, it's the, what are they going to do with it? If they do build there, you know, then we don't know what kind of building they're going to build. And then when they do, are they going to rent them out? Is people going to buy these pieces, you know? So basically, that's it. I just wanted to state my objection as well.
Thank you.
My name is August Nicholas. I live on 301 Essex Court. I'm asking more of a question regarding this as far as, just worried about the quality of life on Essex Court itself for myself, as well as the current residents of 501 to 504. I don't know enough about this project to say whether I support it or not, but I do have issues as regards to whether there will be potential blasting, which we're already enduring from the work site on Winston Road, as well as the noise from construction disruption of the area itself, as well as traffic coming up and down the hill, especially around, around a very tight corner, which is treacherous enough as it is. So, I mean, I don't know enough about this project, but I know that I'm, I'm just hoping that it won't disrupt the quality of life which we enjoy up there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Being done, George, maybe you just clarify, and Attorney Ebersaw, you know, the comments from the public are very justified in the sense that, you know, they're paying for the maintenance and so forth of this road. What arrangements are in place, if any, for compensation entities, associations, and the communities for maintenance upkeep and so forth? It almost sounds, and clarify if I'm incorrect, that this is a separate entity with all the access and all the amenities granted by the existing condo association that's there.
Okay. These are very good questions. I'm sympathetic to the people who live there. You know, there are some needs up there, but the fact is that this piece of property has deeded rights of way, electrical easement, ability to tie in sewer and water, and it has the obligation, and it has been paying, for road maintenance there. So it already pays. So this is not as if we're getting a free ride. We're paying. Now, I think everybody up there probably ought to gather together and upgrade the whole place, but it's not up to the developer who might build a house in the next, or a unit there in the next four years to pay for all the improvements that are needed. There probably are many needs there, but we do have a history of paying, and the legal documents that created this separate piece of property obligate the owner to contribute to the road expenses.
It sounds like the public that's here was unaware of that situation.
I'm very well aware of that.
Name, address, please.
Shelley Noriega, 7100 Court. I'm very well aware of that. We send invoices to Princess Properties to have potholes filled, and we pay for them, and we don't get reimbursed. I'm very well aware of the fact that we have to send twelve invoices and harass people to get twenty-dollar reimbursement. That's for a small pothole. What's, the wear and tear on that road by construction equipment? How, how do we judge what he should reimburse us for that? Who determines that? How do we get that money from him when we can't get twenty dollars? Who do we go after? Mr. Ebersaw? Do we go after you? Do we call you? Will you pay us? Who's going to pay us? Now, if it's, if it's on your street...
Okay. I'm going to ask Mr. Katheria to come up here.
That'll be great.
Okay. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Yes. Answer that. My name is Minish Katheria. I'm one of the principal of Princess Properties to answer some of the questions. Princess Properties and Essex Court, which is, there are, my, Princess Property owns eight units.
Please talk right into the microphone, sir.
Princess Property owns eight units. On Essex Court, there are another, and there are another eighteen units. We all share paying for the road maintenance. We all share electrical bills coming up to the, our area. What she's mentioning about those twenty-dollar bills, this goes back maybe five, six, seven years back. They have sent us a letter saying, "Your people," exactly language, "your people are dropping garbage on our road." Number one. Let me show you that.
No offers, please. Thank you.
These are the two buildings, and there are eighteen more on that side. The road goes out to this area here. They have a dumpster in that place where they are claiming that we drop, our people drop garbage there, which they have no use doing that because we have our own garbage. How do a person know who's dropping the garbage there, and they sent us a twenty or twenty-five dollar bill to Princess Property, as they have sent it to another association, and none of us has paid, and we have no reason to pay it because we don't know who's dropping that garbage there? Beside there, the maintenance of the road, we pay every time. We pay electrical bill every time. So that has never been, they can put a lien on our property if we do not pay that. So that has never happened. And if we ever build anything on this area here, it'll be exactly the same thing. We will have to share all the expenses, and this is how its whole system was written down. Out of two-hundred-some unit, I have only one person who has ever complained and written nasty letters. And that person is right here.
I have a question.
Any other question?
Yeah, I do. I have one. Okay, so this is new.
Can he speak into the microphone?
Sure. This is somewhat of a new piece of evidence I didn't, I wasn't aware of. I don't know if it's in our record. Do we have a record of the deeded rights? Do we have a record of the payment that they made? Do we have anything that supports Attorney Ebersaw's claims?
Wait, did he get it?
I didn't ask if you could get it. I'm sure you can. I'm just curious, I'm curious to know if it's on file, if this was sent in, so that it supports.
No, it's not. We were not aware of this as a concern. We know ourselves that we have to do this, and we've been making our payments for thirty, forty years.
In relative terms, your payments are equivalent to everyone else's?
Oh, yeah. These are all based on percentage. But they sent us a bill, Association One sends us a bill. Sometimes it could be every month, sometimes they do it after three, four months. It is based on the percentage. When we get a bill, we pay it.
Well, even within the fee of a, of a condominium association, the fee includes...
The maintenance, yeah.
Yeah, the maintenance. And that would include the road maintenance. What I'm saying is, you know, on the building, so...
Right.
So my question is, what amount were you billed for the maintenance of the road?
Associate, what we get billed is just for Essex Court, because our buildings are only on Essex Court, so we pay for...
So the claim is that the road coming up, which is Queens...
Full tour, right.
That's belongs to another association. Your claim is that you have rights to use that road.
Right.
And what you're paying for the maintenance of that road?
Yeah.
So what I'm asking is, what amount of money have you been paying? You must be paying that road.
No, there is no monthly payment for that. They bill us when there is some kind of patchwork.
Okay, so you're not actually paying for the maintenance of the road. You're paying for any particular problem that might exist on the road.
Right.
But when you look at a capital account, where you're putting money into a capital account for maintaining the road... account for maintaining the road, that fee is what you're paying. You pay a monthly fee that goes up to a capital account, which says, "This money's reserved for the repair of that road if you ever have to resurface it or do anything else." What I'm asking is, are you contributing to that capital account on a monthly basis?
Oh, no. They have never built us going back 30, 40 years. They have not.
Are they supposed to bill you, or was that an agreement? I mean, if you have an agreement, if you use a common road, I would expect the agreement to indicate what level of cost is associated with your connection to that piece of property.
There is no agreement of that sort, since I own the property, where we have to pay monthly payment to them. We pay monthly payment to Essex Court, which is Association Three.
Okay.
But there is no.
I just wanted to know if they had a formal agreement.
Right.
You don't?
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's no, never any rules for written where we have to pay anything else except if they repaint the whole road, we will pay for it. If they pass.
We don't have an agreement that says you'll do that. You're just.
Yeah, there's no agreement. Yeah. Right.
I'd like to add to that. As you've heard, there are several associations there. And as I understand it, each association has its own dues, which cover the maintenance of their own roads. But the other associations don't pay for the, for the road maintenance on associations that they pass. That's just the way that it's set up.
But if you have, if you have an association at the beginning, that everybody's traveling that road to get here, here, and here, they're taking the brunt of all the maintenance. These other individuals are paying their maintenance on their individual sections.
Right.
Who's paying for the main road?
Everybody who, everybody pays for the road in their association. And if you fault him.
And that's right from Winston Road all the way up, you're saying?
If you say that he should be paying for part of the road, is it Queens Road?
Queens Road.
The other associations, they don't pay for, for maintenance of Queens Road.
Okay.
I'm in.
Name and address. Name and address, please. Back to podium circuit.
Just one last question, thing I should mention. Association Two, which this lady is from, she does not pay to Association One for maintenance of their monthly payment. I don't think they do that, to best of my knowledge.
We'll hear from her on that.
Thank you.
David Bender, Essex Court. I'm in Squire Hill Park Three. In our fees for our HOA, it is included that we pay One and Two for their common uses, and Two pays One for their common uses. So we do pay towards those every month. It's built into our HOA fees.
So in your HOA fees, does that cover Queens Road then?
It covers any roads from the beginning of it all the way up, because we're at the very top. So we have to pay for all of those roads.
Thank you, sir.
Wait till you get there, please.
I don't want to forget my sock.
No repeat testimony, please. Go ahead.
Okay. I've lived at Squire Hill for 18 years. I've been on the board of directors in the past of Squire Hill Number Two. Surrey Lane is the entrance from Winston Road. Anyone who drives to Hunter Court, Queens Road, or Essex Court has got to drive on Surrey Lane. All three associations, Two, Three, and Princess Properties reimburse Squire Hill One and Squire Hill Two for any road work.
Princess Properties does also. That's what you just said. That's what you just said.
We only charge them when there's work done. If we fill potholes on Queens Road, we prorate it with us always paying the largest percentage because we have the most residents. We prorate it between condo Two, condo Three, and Princess Properties. The only time we can charge them is when we have a, a bill, when there is an invoice for work done. Our concern is that now there's gonna be construction vehicles coming up on an already very compromised road.
In the case of that, Attorney Eversol, you may be privy to this. Marty, there'd be bonds put in place.
Well, not because it's a private one. That's up to whatever their association has to say in their legal document.
Well, the association can post bonds back before they even.
If, if they're saying that the current owner isn't helpful, he's trying to subdivide this property because he's got a new owner that he wants to sell that building to. So maybe.
That's kind of what I saw.
So maybe this might work out good in your favor.
Well, that still doesn't help us from when he rode up our roads for the first two buildings he built.
We're not, we're not ready to discuss.
But we're trying to prevent this from happening again, what, 10 years later, on roads that are even worse than they were then. And, and yes, we all pay towards the common areas of Squire Hill. Surrey Lane and Queens Road are common areas. Two and One do not contribute to anything that happens on Essex Court because we do not use their road. We have no reason to drive on Essex Court. Condo Two, Hunter Court and Queens Road reimburses condo One for electrical because they have underground streetlights. We get a bill for that every month. If there's any trees cut down on condo One property, we have to help pay for that. The road, we pay for when potholes are filled or curbing is fixed. And I assume the other associations do that as well. So that's always happened. But there is nothing in place for a monthly payment. That has never been.
Well, it sounds like this gentleman's looking to sell the property, obviously. That's common knowledge here this evening. Hypothetically, if this is sold, it sounds like the association should get together with the new owner and create an agreement mutual agreeable to all the parties.
That would be lovely.
For future construction activity and so forth.
How will we know who that new owner is?
Well, Attorney Eversol is gonna represent.
I don't know if that's privy information at this time.
I only represent the purchaser of the building number Five. But I think I have a solution that hopefully will make everybody happy. And that is, Mr. Catheria will agree that as a condition of going forward with building the building down below, which he may never do, that he will have to demonstrate to this commission, which he has to come back to, that that building will pay for its proportionate share of the roads that it uses for access. It may never happen, but he will allow you to make it a condition of approval that'll happen, prove to you that he will be paying, or whoever owns this will be paying their proportionate share of the burden on the other roads up there.
How about to the point of those roads that may get destroyed during a potential construction project? You know, because, you know, haven't inspected today. If there's extreme damage tomorrow, after, you know, 10-wheelers and 18-wheelers are going through there, you know?
Well, I think, Mr. Congressman, I think, you know, you can require that a bond be posted so that if they do construction there and they do damage, that they have to.
But again, it's private property.
Right. And who determines what the damage is and the extent of the damage?
You have to do it before.
But we're willing to make it a condition.
And who pays for that?
That we have to do that.
I think that's fair, Attorney Eversol.
It sounds like a good idea, but how do we know that that's actually gonna happen?
Well, what happens is, this is a special exception permit. Special exception gets filed on the land records. And then the condition of approval that I have suggested to the commission is that they have to come back if they're going to build that new building and get site plan approval from the commission. And that condition of approval will be all part of that site plan.
So is this special exception just allowing him to sell the property?
Yes. So that's what this is all about.
You could've just said that, like.
I tried to. I tried to say it.
I didn't. I mean, I, I understood that's what it was, but I'm not sure everyone else did.
Okay. Well, that's what it's all about.
Okay. So this is allowing Mr. Catheria to sell that parcel so someday someone can build a building on it?
That's right. He didn't want to sell that condo unit with 21 acres of land. He only wanted to sell it with one acre.
Okay. I kinda got the gist of that, but with AC, B2, R2, D2, all that crap in there, it's kinda hard to understand.
And again, as Mr. Congressman said, they would have to come back here to this commission for future development, which can be scrutinized and obviously.
The same discussion can take place.
Right.
Which future can mean what? Next year or 10 years?
Exactly.
It could be later. But it's a buildable lot. I mean, you know, the taxpayers of Torrington will be glad that they at least have a buildable lot that they can tax. Otherwise, so.
Okay. So going forward, the road issue is the main issue.
And it sounds like that's, that's been addressed. And again, if this comes again before this commission.
That would be addressed, yeah. Would we get the same notification that we got about this meeting?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, because obviously I want to be her. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Okay. Any summations, Attorney Eversol? George? Marty, do you have anything else?
No. I think I would ask that you at least, well, you could close the public hearing, but let me draft a motion for your consideration for the next meeting to make sure I get that information.
All right.
Properly in the.
Why don't we do that? We're gonna close this public hearing. The time is 7:58. We will not make a determination until Marty drafts his recommendations. Thank you, everyone.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Donovan Riley, Commissioner Peresino's point about the deeded rights, the ingress and the egress, can we get some clarification on that for next time? In other words, are we gonna take it on Attorney Eversol's word that it is as he describes it?
Thank you. Attorney Eversol's gonna submit that, Mr. Donovan. Thank you.
Thank you. That makes perfect sense. I appreciate it.
The time is 7:58. Moving on to the agenda, item number four C, special exception 21-08. Advocate Susan Leo O'Connor, Leo O'Connor, location Three Goshen Road, proposes group daycare for section 3.1 subsection 2.40. Serving on the commission this evening is Starley Arias, Greg Peresino, Don Greco, myself, Greg Mealy, also the chancellor, city planner, Martin Connor. Serving remotely is Diane Carroll, Donovan Riley, Tom Tillman, and Jim Krabinski. Commissioner Greco, do you have a little notice, please?
I do. The Planning and Zoning Commission has scheduled a public hearing on the following applications, Wednesday, July 21, 2021, beginning at 7:00 PM in the City Hall Auditorium, room 218140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Special exception 21-08, applicant Susan Leo O'Connor, location Three Goshen Road, proposal preschool program, 12 children. Time of hearing immediately following the close of the second pub, the first public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner Greco. Is the applicant in attendance, please?
Yes, I am.
You're remote. Thank you. Your name and address for the record, please.
It's Susan Leo O'Connor, 68 Dawes Avenue in Torrington.
Thank you. Were the donations signed, posted for the duration?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, please, fill out some of what you're trying to do, please.
Okay. I'm proposing to use the existing church Sunday School classrooms for my preschool program, which will never exceed 12 children. So it technically will be a group daycare home, which means that we can never go larger than 12 kids. And because the property provides ample parking for kids to be dropped off during the week when Sunday services are not being held, it seems to be an ideal location. And it also is right next to the Bessie Park. I am not proposing any structure, any changes to the building or the exterior. And it was constructed in 2011, this annex, and was designed under the 2005 State Building Code and classified as a Group E educational use group, specifically per section 305.2 daycare. And the rooms, the four rooms that I'm going to use were designed for a total occupancy of 46. But my plan is to have my facility with 12 students. And I am not going to construct, enlarge, alter, repair, move, or change the occupancy of this building.
So this, what would your hours be, Ms., and what days? It doesn't interfere with the church services at all?
No.
Okay.
So this is what she proposes?
It's there.
It's all there. We approved this years ago, for Sunday School classrooms.
She's just trying to use it.
Yeah. So this is Monday through Friday, Ms.?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, no, well.
All right. Marty, you have a memo there?
I do.
Please.
Susan Leo O'Connor has filed a special exception application to open a group daycare facility at the First Congregational Church at Three Goshen Road. Property is 1.2 acres in size. It's located in the R6 zone. She proposes to use the existing church Sunday School classrooms for a preschool program for up to 12 children. A group daycare home/facility is allowed by special exception in the R6 zone per section 3.1 subsection 2.4.0 of the zoning regulations. Accordingly, according to the zoning regs, a group daycare home is defined as a residence or a facility which provides a program of supplementary care to not less than seven, no more than 12 children on a regular basis for part of the 24 hours of one or more days of the week. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved site plan 969, March 17, 2010, to add 3,400 square classroom addition, assembly spaces, and changes to the parking lot to the church. The applicant proposes to use a portion of her preschool. The site plan approval was modified 5/17/2011. The church provided the applicant with a site plan survey submitted in conjunction with their previous approvals titled zoning location survey showing proposed addition prepared for the First Congregational Church of Torrington, Connecticut, number Three, Goshen Road, Connecticut Route Four and Riverside Avenue, Torrington, Connecticut, by Berkshire Engineering and Surveying LLC, dated 5/24/11. Also submitted was a floor plan prepared by DeWright Design LLC titled Addition for the First Congregational Church of Torrington, dated 5/9/11. Ms. O'Connor is proposing no changes to the building or exterior of the church. Unlike a child daycare facility, which is for 13 or more children, there are no specific requirements for a group daycare home/facility. The commission will review the general requirements for special exception approval per section 8.2 of the regulations. The church property provides ample parking for child drop-off during the week when Sunday services are not being held. It's, it is ideally located next to the Charlene Bessie Park, City Park with playground equipment. Other staff comments, Fire Marshal Ed Bissett in a letter to me dated 6/29/21 indicated the building should be equipped with a complete and compliant fire protection system compatible with the change of use. The fact it will be vacant during non-business hours makes it a prime candidate for the delayed discovery of a fire inside. Two, the Torrington makes use of lock boxes to allow quick access by firefighters in the time of an alarm without causing damage. If not already in existence, a lock box should be installed on the exterior of the building near the main door. The fire department will use its secure master keys to open the box and allow the building owner to leave appropriate building access keys inside. This eliminates any delay in entering the building or waiting for a key holder to arrive in the middle of the night. Three, the building and area must comply with all required building and electrical codes and will be inspected by the Fire Marshal for compliance with the Life Safety Code prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy and annually thereafter. Building official Kevin Gillette reviewed the application 7/6/21 and indicated a change of use would be required from the building department and provided the applicant with a list of permits that may be required. She will have to address these comments before a certificate of occupancy is issued. WPCA, Ray Drew Public Works Direct. WPCA, Ray Drew, Public Works Director, in a memo to me dated six thirty twenty-one indicated an applicant shall submit an application for sewer discharge permit and the usual additional information that he requires, one through eight. Engineering Paul Consons, P.E., in a memo to me dated seven six twenty-one, said the engineering department does not foresee any issues with regards to this special exception application and therefore endorses the application. Landscaping, lighting, and inland wetlands, no exterior changes are proposed. There are no regulated inland wetlands activities proposed. This constitutes a favorable review from the inland wetlands commission. Police traffic had no comments. I recommend, now, the commission make a finding the application meets the general standards for special exception approval. I recommend approval of the group daycare facility with the following condition and recommendation. One, the applicant shall address the comments from Ray Drew, Public Works Director, contained in a memo to the City Planner dated six thirty twenty-one. And two, it's recommended the applicant follow the advice of Fire Marshal Ed Becetta contained in his letter to the City Planner dated six twenty-nine twenty-one.
Thank you, Marty. Do any commissioners have any comments or questions?
Question?
Please.
The difference between group daycare and the other options is?
More kids.
It's just a count, right?
Yeah.
Up to twelve or in that twelve room?
Yeah, and then when you go over that, then they have to have a certain amount of playground space.
Okay, so it becomes more regulations or more stipulations.
Yeah, there's more regulations.
And so the only other thing is, how do you police, how do you police a thirteen? This is big enough to handle more.
Yeah, well, I mean, if she wants more, then she comes back to the commission.
And can I just say that if I wanted more, it would change, it would change my application to the state of Connecticut for licensing also.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question. I may have missed it. Ms. Leo O'Connor, in your presentation, so do you, do you have an agreement or who owns the facility?
The church.
Okay, and so you have an agreement with the church?
Yes.
In place already to go ahead? Okay.
Yes.
I may have missed that. I apologize.
That's okay. And, and the Fire Marshal's recommendation, there is a lock box already installed on the outside of the building. He had called me and said to disregard that because it's already in place.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any comments before we go into public? Okay. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record in favor.
Well, if you're in favor, go on up.
Your name and address, please, for the record.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Kincaid of seventy-nine Lewis Street in Torrington. I would like to show my support for this project. I have worked with Susan O'Connor for the last two years as a teacher's aide and substitute teacher at Torrington School. I think she is a very smart and dedicated teacher, and I think she'll make a great daycare provider, and I think you should approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward and.
I don't know how to do this because.
You gotta come up to the microphone, whatever.
Well, that's the question.
Are you in favor or opposition?
I'm not sure.
Okay, well.
Okay.
Name and address for the record, please.
I'm at three sixty-four Circle Drive. I'm a member of the church. And generally, yes, of course, I'm in favor of it, but I do have questions. Okay, so it's, it's an ideal match. It makes sense. It's a beautiful thing. However, I do have a question. It was asked earlier, what are the hours? I didn't hear that for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. The hours are Monday through Friday, seven thirty till five PM.
Okay, so the second thing is, we have a limited entrance on Goshen Road, which is the address that you see on the application. We're not allowed to exit that way. We have an entrance and exit on Riverside Avenue. However, the second Tuesday of the month, there's a food bank. If they decide we cannot set up distribution tables at Bessie Park parking lot, then it has to be done on Riverside Avenue, which would make it difficult for students to be dropped off and picked up on the second Tuesday of the month. Has this been discussed with you, Susan?
No, actually, it has not.
Okay, so that's a consideration for a special understanding. And the third thing is, although she says she has an agreement with the church, she has a nominal agreement with the church. It has not been approved by the trustees. It has not been approved by the prudential. It has to go through those two boards before it finalizes approval.
Well, she has, she has, the pastor has signed the application on behalf of the church. That's all Planning and Zoning needs to say.
And that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that that understanding is in place, that we still have to go through a couple more hoops before this is finalized. Wanted to make sure that was in the minutes. And that's it. But Susan, I welcome you personally. Just wanted to make sure you were aware of all this.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a quick comment on the hours at the end of the day. Typically, I would assume some of these individuals are being picked up at different times.
Yes.
You know, so ultimately at five thirty or whatever time it was, you may have two people left, correct?
Five o'clock, yes.
Five o'clock, okay. Thank you.
Because the meat of the program is eight thirty to three thirty.
Okay, all right. Yeah. Okay, very good. Name and address for the record, please.
Michael Reinschlur, three sixty-four Circle Drive, Torrington. Susan, is this all in the church or is there a reason why they would ever leave the church as preschoolers?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your first part of your question.
Okay. Is there any reason why they would need to leave the church as preschoolers during the time that they're there? To go to Bessie Park or anything?
Is, you're asking me, will they ever leave the grounds and go to the park?
Whether they will leave the interior of the church and be on the church property or go to Bessie Park?
They're going to be utilizing the grass space next to the ramp.
Thank you. Okay, that was an important idea as well. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Would anyone like to speak in opposition of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Being known, time is eight fifteen. I declare this public hearing closed. We'll make a decision as soon as Commissioner Greco reads it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve special exception twenty-one dash zero eight. Applicant Susan Leo O'Connor, location three Goshen Road, proposal group daycare per section three point one subsection two point four zero. The commission makes a finding that the application meets the general standards for special exception. The proposal is approved with the following condition and recommendation. One, the applicant shall address the comments from Ray Drew, Public Works Director, contained in a memo to the City Planner dated six thirty twenty-one. Two, it is recommended that the applicant follow the advice of Fire Marshal Ed Becetta contained in his letter to the City Planner dated six twenty-nine twenty-one.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Time is eight sixteen. We've got to add to a general item number four, D, special exception twenty-one dash zero seven, applicant Benjamin and Sabrina Chris Woodruff, location thirty-nine Spruce Drive, propose section five point twelve point six, four point nineteen, addition to accessory structure within setback area already constructed. Serving on the commission this evening, Starley Arias, Greg Peresino, Donna Greco, myself, Greg Mealy. Also in attendance is our City Planner Martin Connor in person. Serving remotely is Diane Carroll, Donovan Riley, Tom Tellman, and Jim Babinski. Commissioner Greco, do you have a legal notice, please?
I do. The Planning and Zoning Commission has scheduled a public hearing on the following applicant, applications on Wednesday, July twenty-first, 2021, beginning at seven PM in the City Hall Auditorium, room two eighteen, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Special exception twenty-one dash zero seven, applicant Benjamin and Sabrina Chris Woodruff, location thirty-nine Spruce Drive, proposal section five point one, two point six, and five, and four point one nine, addition to accessory structure within setback area already constructed. Time of hearing immediately following the close of the second public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner Greco. Is the applicant in attendance? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Ben Woodruff, thirty-nine Spruce Drive, Torrington, Connecticut.
And what are you looking to do, sir?
Back into my garage, I built a sixteen by twelve addition off of it, and it's, does not impede the property line from the front of the building. It's the exact same. So it was built in the height of COVID. There was some confusion on the website saying, when I looked the information up, it was two hundred square feet or less. I don't need a permit. The structure is a hundred ninety-six square feet, and because I attached it to the garage, it now becomes a different issue. I was unaware of that. So that's where the confusion on my part came in.
Okay. So now we're looking to get into compliance at this point.
Correct.
Yeah, it was too close to the property line once again.
Yes.
Well, the confusion is over whether you need a build, you don't need a building permit if the structure's less than two hundred square feet, but you always, always, always need a zoning permit. So.
Yeah, but if he's attached into an existing building and now the square footage is over two hundred, you need a building.
Yeah, so he's, he needs both.
I was unaware of that. I'm sorry. The, the way the website is worded, I just assumed that.
It was a difficult time for.
Yes.
Fortunately, there is a correction to it that could be made if the commission approves it.
Right. All right. Marty, what's your, what's your memo, please?
Benjamin and Sabrina Chris Woodruff have filed an after-the-fact special exception to expand the garage on their property at thirty-nine Spruce Street. Property is a single-family dwelling with a detached garage. The original pre-existing non-conforming garage was three hundred and eighty-four square feet in size, according to the tax assessor's card. It's been expanded to five hundred and eighty-nine square feet, according to the Class A two survey slash site plan titled zoning location survey prepared for Benjamin R. and Chris S. Woodruff, thirty-nine Spruce Street, Torrington, Connecticut, by Berkshire Engineering and Surveying, dated four twenty-three fourteen, revised six nine twenty-one. It's located in the R ten S zone. It's eleven thousand one hundred and seventy-seven square feet in size. The original garage was a pre-existing non-conforming structure that's located four point seven feet from the east side property line. The addition to the rear of the garage is four point nine feet from the east side property line. The garage meets the front, rear, and west side requirements. The lot, well, it meets the overall lot size requirements in the R ten S zone, is narrow at sixty-five foot in lot width, as opposed to the required three feet of lot width. The garage contains no living space. The addition blends in with the original structure. The property is under contract, and the addition constructed without the necessary building and zoning approvals was picked up during the appraisal. Section four point one nine of the zoning regulations allows expansion of a pre-existing non-conformal structure as follows. Where an existing building is in violation of the front side or rear side setbacks or buffer, and the applicant has requested an expansion of the building, the commission may, by special exception, allow a reduction of the setback or buffer for such building expansion to the lesser of twenty percent of required setback or buffer or the setback of the existing building. In reviewing the plan submitted, I have the following comments. The as-built A two survey indicates the garage expansion will not create any additional non-conformities. The addition conforms to section four point one nine above. An approval block needs to be added to the site plan in accordance with section eight point four three P of the regulations. The application was not referred to the Fire Marshal Ed Becetta, as he has no jurisdiction over single-family residences. Please have no comments. Inland wetlands, according to the official city wetlands map, there are no wetlands in the vicinity of the project, therefore, no inland wetlands application is required. This constitutes a favorable report from the Torrington Inland Wetlands Commission. Landscaping, no exterior landscaping is proposed or recommended as part of this application. Lighting, no new exterior lighting appears to be proposed as part of this application. Any new exterior lighting shall comply with section five seventeen of the zoning regs. Engineering review, Paul Consons, Assistant Public Works Director slash City Engineer, in an email memo to me dated seven seven twenty-one, indicated the engineering department does not foresee any issues with regards to this special exception and therefore endorses this application. WPCA, Mary Pirati, Administrative Assistant Water Police Controller, filed an email memo to me dated six twenty-nine twenty-one, indicated they have no comments on the proposal. Building, Building Official Kevin Gillette, in preliminary site plan review dated six twenty-nine twenty-one, indicates the detailed IRS section R one oh six construction documents, as applicable, will be required for permitting of the proposed addition to the existing accessory structure if the floor area is greater than two hundred square feet in total. Conclusion, I recommend the commission make a finding that the application meets the general and specific standards for special exception approval. I recommend approval of the special exception application for the proposed garage expansion with the following conditions. One, an approval block shall be added to the A two as-built survey slash site plan in accordance with section eight point four point three P of the regulations. And two, a zoning permit and building permit shall be required for the garage addition.
Thank you, Marty. Marty, in one of your comments, there's no additional non-conformity, so we're good on building coverage?
Yeah, they're okay, yeah. The lies, the lies, just no. Otherwise, it probably would have been built, you know, further up on the sidewalk.
Any commissioners have any comments or questions at this point?
No, he's not.
I had the inspector out there today, and now an architect and engineer have to get involved. I've put four twelve-inch stonewalls underneath for a foundation, and they have to come and draw plans for the inside of how I built it. So that will all also be presented to the building.
Okay, very good, sir. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Being known, would anyone like to speak in opposition of this application? Being known, the time is eight twenty-five. I declare this public hearing closed. We'll make a decision as soon as Commissioner Greco.
I'd like to make a motion to approve special exception twenty-one dash zero seven. Applicant Benjamin and Sabrina Chris Woodruff, location thirty-nine Spruce Drive, proposal section five point one, two point six, four point one nine, addition to accessory structure within setback area already constructed. The commission makes a finding that the application meets the general and specific standards for special exception approval. The proposal is approved with the following conditions. One, an approved block shall be, an approval block shall be added to the A two as-built survey slash site plan in accordance with section eight point four point three point P of the regulations. Two, a zoning permit and building permit shall be required for the garage addition.
Have a motion, have a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
So, good luck, sir.
Thank you very much.
Right. Moving on to agenda, item number, the time is eight twenty-six. Moving on to agenda, item number five, old business, we have none.
No, you're not on the agenda tonight, so if you were here on the Circle Drive application, that was tabled.
Yeah, I just wanted to find out since it wasn't brought up.
It was, you walked in late.
Oh, no. Sorry about that.
Okay, just to reiterate, Ms., that has been tabled. It will take place on August eighteenth.
Which I understand. I just.
Okay, you walked in late. I noticed that. Okay, we announced that first thing, okay? All right, thank you. Moving on to agenda, agenda, item number. Moving on to agenda, agenda item number six, new business aid, zoning light violation update. We have a packet, uh, some information in our packet this evening. Marty, you want to touch upon anything or?
No, everything, uh, the Rosa thing.
I would like to make a comment regarding how we've managed to acquire now a piece of property above the road. So I really think that the light is gaining. Well, yeah, we've got two pieces, like a piece on High Street just happened. Yeah, so and then Rosa thing, we we did have a uh.
I understand he has his own attorney now.
Well, now, he did, but at least the court provided us with the foreclosure that we asked for now. And so that forces the issue, what what comes out is going to be up in the air because obviously Vic's going to have to argue the city's position over the passing of Zola, who's his attorney. Uh, however, what I wanted to say was that I feel like we're finally making the inroads that we've wanted to do over the years and it's starting to gain um the the strength that it needs.
Plus, we've collected forty thousand dollars this year.
Yeah, well, one of the things I mentioned, Dick, on the Rosa property is because we have these fines, you know, I want to stay fight for that. You know, the value of it is, is you can fight because you haven't confirmed, and therefore I'm not forgiving the fine.
I think it's part of the super age. You know, with properties being acquired now, hopefully it's going to wake up some of these other individuals that, you know, we mean business and the cities.
I've said a hundred times, when you give in and allow the thing to transpire into something worse, you're sending the message, the message, the city's not 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 going to bite you. But no, we've got to be firm, just like any other laws. You move and have to abide by.
Well, I think Jeremy and Ashley from my office are doing a bang-up job. And unlike past administrations, this administration backs them up.
Yeah.
And they've given Corporation Council, you know, marching orders to spend time on it. So if you don't have the administration backing up the staff, again, things don't happen.
Right. Well, it's pleasant.
Yeah, good.
Very good.
So I did pass out to you folks the twenty twenty-one guide to legislative impacting development and land use procedures. This all happened at the very end of the legislative session. In fact, some of the changes for the law, for the laws uh happened with the Implementer Act after they were supposed to have been done with the whole thing. So there are some important things in here.
Yeah.
Um, but we're going to have to grapple with. Um, certainly the um marijuana regulations and whether or not uh, you know, we're going to allow recreational cannabis sales and also um whether or not we're going to allow cultivator licenses. And we're going to have to talk about that, so I want you to look that over carefully. Um, there were some changes uh to the accessory dwelling units and this, there was a heck of a lot of discussion about how to create more affordable housing in the last legislature. Legis- you know, the legislators. And one of the ways they figure, now, these are never usually end up uh permanently protected affordable housing units. But let's face it, if you put an accessory apartment on your on your property, more than likely it's going to rent in an affordable fashion. And it also adds, you know, some additional types of dwelling units. So we already allowed a lot of our zones accessory apartments, but we do have, we do not allow them as of right in the uh tennis, you know, the R ten S zone, R fifteen S zones. So the legislation would require us to make some changes to our regulations. So.
Because right now it's by special exception.
Yeah.
So it's it's something that I saw Massachusetts do. And I've seen the housing where there's accessory buildings built that are effectively a full apartment.
Yes.
For one, for one person or two people. Um, I can add, I can say, though, I haven't seen it gain a lot of traction.
Yeah, well, here's the thing. There is an opt-out. If we didn't want to do that, it would require two-thirds of the planning and zoning commission to vote that they want to opt-out. That has to go to the mayor and city council for them to opt-out. Personally, I don't think this is, I think it's still a pretty good idea.
I don't, I don't see any reason to opt-out. I I just, I don't think, it'll gain traction if there's a reason for it.
Right.
And I think if we continue to do what we're doing, which is deal with the the uh ability to have affordable housing available within the city in terms of development pieces and stuff like that, like we've done on Franklin, that there'll be less demand for that. And and also it should be there just for the purposes of having the variation.
And 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 you know, it kind of builds up uh those accessory dwelling units for the medic- medical necessary thing. We had opt-out before. We never had a single one come in. But I was proud of the commission for not opting out of that. And that was, you know, like if you had a parent or a family member and you needed to put an accessory apartment that, you know, to help them out in a medically necessary thing.
I will say when we're talking about that, the affordability housing plan, I like to see the fact that they have this deadline for Mr. Valleys to adopt the first affordable housing plan.
Right.
For June one, twenty twenty-two, because my complaint in the past has always been we're presenting the plans for affordable housing, which we deal with, and we try to follow the statute, which is the recommendation by the state for actually recording. Or what was it, eleven percent? How much a percent?
Ten percent.
Yeah, while we do that, all the towns and hills don't do it.
Right. You know, so. No, that's right.
Marty, see this one, they're saying maximum size of at least a thousand square feet. Right now, we're at seven hundred.
So we have to make changes.
Sure.
So I'm just saying, if 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 you think that.
But this is saying regulations must allow maximum size.
Right.
Of a thousand.
So we have to off ours to a thousand.
Okay, from seven hundred to that.
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
Right.
And obviously the thirty percent of the overall, so you're going to have, you know, roughly.
I wouldn't doubt, I wouldn't doubt that we didn't really look at Massachusetts.
Oh, I'm sure they did. I'm sure they did. So if if you're willing, then I will work on taking a look at the revisions that we need to make for that.
Be proactive, sure.
Right.
Outdoor dining, we go to, always my idea that we would continue to allow it even if the pandemic goes away.
Yeah, no, and we have.
Yeah.
We've already, you know, we did that, we were ahead of the legislation before. So we really didn't have to do anything. The only thing that we did a little different was allow um some in the parking lot.
Yes.
So I would probably need to just take a look at that section of our regulation.
Yeah.
And we just continued it under the executive.
Control Commission fall into this moving forward, because I know during the pandemic, they relaxed all their regulations, so to speak. If you had an indoor liquor permit, they were allowing.
It's not in the statute.
It is.
It's in the statute now.
Okay, so you can move it outside without a special patio permit or anything.
Well, you still have to get a patio permit, but if you have the inside one, it's kind of like a guarantee.
Got you.
So.
Well, I really like the idea because I think that the more, you know, people outdoors, especially in downtown, especially in the downtown area, but I prefer to see it no matter where. But I just think outdoor dining is really.
I think in the light of the pandemic, people.
I think people really like the one.
Oh, I know, you do. It's become very, very popular.
Right. I will say one thing that I I would like to at least think about a little bit more. We have this wonderful downtown, very wide sidewalks, but it is encroached on a little bit more than I would expect it to be. And I'm not picking on Sasso's, but Sasso happens to stretch himself out pretty far. And you know, yeah, maybe, and I think our regulation says thirty-six or three feet.
Yeah, he's got three feet.
He's got three feet, but I will say three feet's tight.
Yeah.
You know, you have a lot of people downtown trying to get by. Somebody's going to be in the street.
It's like my hallway.
Anyways, um, if we're looking at this, we might want to revisit.
Well, then there's places we wouldn't have, so let's.
Well, we could revisit. I doesn't mean we'll change it.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I'm saying.
Um, back to what your comment about the affordable housing plan, we have to do our plan. I got a fifteen thousand dollar grant. I got the um, uh, the cog is going to administer it for us. But I need someone to pony up and be on, from our commission to be on it.
On the committee.
Are you on it?
I'm not on it.
No.
You're on it, you're on it. Your mayor, your mayor has been recruiting.
Yeah, so hopefully Charlie will.
It's a, it's a temporary commitment.
Yeah.
It's only four years.
No.
Just worth four years of my life.
We're going to get it done by the end of the year.
Yeah, well, as the requirement says here, by June twenty twenty-two, you got it.
But I have to get it done hopefully by the end of the year because um, you know, that's what our grants does, so. So as a matter of just giving a committee together, we might be doing some by Zoom.
Yeah, I haven't had the chance to reply to the mayor, but I'll reply to her.
Okay.
Actually, yeah, I'll do it.
All right, that's great. Thank you.
Young and energetic.
Yeah.
Love it.
Better do it now.
So we'll keep you up to speed on that. And of course, when we have um, you know, we'll have some public meetings on it. We'll want the commission to all participate.
Can we talk about some of the things that might be going on downtown? You might be able to say that.
Sure.
The new uh, new Thai restaurant, is that?
I went in there today. It's going to be fabulous. The guy.
Now, they're they're still have their existing restaurant in Brooklyn.
They still are running their restaurant in Brooklyn. That's why things are going slow.
Yeah.
And the other problem is apparently this guy is such a good chef. He's also this, as good a woodworker. And he is, I mean, he's building like waitress stations by hand and, you know, his bar and.
Tell him chop chop.
Oh, my gosh.
Place to eat.
It's beautiful inside, the tile work he's doing. It's pretty incredible.
So that's that's a great thing that's happening there. Um, Water Street, top of Water Street, uh, all that, where PCM goes on the left-hand side. What's the status of that?
What's happening there now is they're before the State Historical Commission over portions of the building that they want to demolish. So there's that, and they're piecing together their um, uh, their investors. So I think they're going to be meeting with the city council and the mayor on um tax abatements, future tax abatements to make the project work. But it's all going to be, as far as I know, it's all market rate and it's going to be really nice. There's some underground parking for the apartments.
Round back.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
You think about on the old Morrison's building?
Yeah, that's um a bakery on the first floor.
Okay.
Is it moving forward though?
Yeah, well, I'm, she's she's having some problems with the electrical.
Yeah, because there's no room to get the electric.
So yeah, did they call you? Because I think I I I asked.
There's no real estate to get the transformer out there.
So.
No place to put it.
So ever source is not being helpful.
Well, it's not.
I'm surprised.
No, it's not that they're not being helpful. To my understanding, if you don't have the the real estate to place that transformer pad on, you're going to stop.
Well, she's considering buying the property behind her.
That's probably the key.
But, you know, I don't know if they're ransoming the property for a higher amount than.
Because even an overhead service, they can only bring you maximum four hundred amps over there. And if she needs, because you got apartments plus the bakery, the electrical service size is larger.
There's apartments in that building?
They're building apartments.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, second and third floor will be apartments.
There's dance studios before, right?
Yeah. And she owns a bed and breakfast in Norfolk and, you know.
Now, the ground's broken and the pen rolls.
Oh, yeah.
I saw them.
Haynes is going to town now.
Yeah, I saw him putting the footing in today.
Where's this?
Oh, I found them.
Pen rolls are.
Okay.
And is there any more uh interest in the uh?
The next piece?
Yeah, the next.
Well, they're they're working, still working on cleanup and what the costs are and all that.
Any update on what is it, margaritas or this other restaurant on Main Street?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I signed the liquor permit form, but I don't know what they're doing inside at the moment.
And where's Margarita's?
The black windows right here.
It's one of the old um.
Kind of next to kids play, a couple doors down.
Ah.
The only other question I had was, we was always looking to extend the bike path down. But when, you know, the PermaRus project will obviously provide that, at least the connection.
Yeah, to there.
Not at the point past that to get to the senior center.
Well, we'll have to go out on the street.
You got to go on the street.
Yeah.
I mean, the hope was at some point was to be able to get a bridge and go over the river and connect from the other side, but we have to get all the way down the old.
We got a ways to go, yeah.
Yeah, along with.
Okay. But meanwhile, we should go out on the streets and start.
That street isn't that bad.
No, yeah, it can, and they are going to redo that street at some point, so they'll make a bike path.
Bike path or bike run.
Right.
Any updates on the pedal?
Uh, other than um.
Status quo.
Yeah, well, we're a core, yeah. I think there was another hearing delayed kind of thing, but the mayor is going to start light fines again on them.
Well, we had a, there's like community meeting on that, so yeah, it's it's a situation that, like anything else, you know, you go through your process and you have this great sense that you're going to be in a great position. But there's always what they're going to do for countering, and their counter is pretty strong. So it puts a lot of pressure on us financially if we want to fight it. So we talked about alternatives. We haven't picked one yet, but we are looking at hard at the like, we might just pivot to.
Yeah.
Using a bike enforcement to uh to do it. But we're not settled on it yet, we're, you know.
Then there's some other new little businesses going in.
Yeah.
There's a soul food restaurant that's going in a couple doors down from the subway, the old subway.
Uh, you should also know, guys, that coming up on the thirty-first, it's, I think it's going to be a really cool event, but Powell, I'm on that. I'm committed for the, this, what's called Summer Fest. So Powell Summer Fest is going to be Friday night and Saturday, the big event is Saturday, but Friday night is going to have a car show downtown. And we got comerfores to come down to Plaza, the Torrenton, is that where it is? Those guys were so generous, they let us use that for free of charge. And so that's going to be a fundraiser for Powell. But that'll be the first time we've had a carnival with about eight rides and a Ferris wheel. We're going to have a Ferris wheel. Um, I think it was Northwest Community Bank has sponsored the Ferris wheel because that was an official class. But um, that's a two-night deal. We're Friday night, they're going to run the carnival, and then Saturday, obviously Saturday into the evening.
And Wednesday?
So this is July, uh, July thirtieth or, and July thirty-first. And if you go look at the marquee, you know, they've they've put it up on the marquee over at the corner of the announcement. And there's going to be a three-on-three basketball competition. And uh, kids play is going to have something going on. We got the the gallery involved. We got um the ballerinas or the ballet company, that they're going to be doing something. So it's going to be a pretty good activity for downtown, kind of closing off the main street.
Yeah.
Yeah. At the big, big.
No rain.
Well, that's what we're hoping for, because the rain date is next day. You know, you go from Saturday to Sunday, but that's that's the extended.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it moves out. Anyways, I think that's great to have something.
That is good stuff.
Another activity downtown Torrenton.
Well, again, I think with COVID getting more.
It's a desire.
Yeah.
I'm a desire for it, for sure. People want to get out and have some.
Mm-hmm.
Anyways, got anything else?
I think that's it. I'm the mayor and the police chief and Greg and some others are going to start a little conversation about um the marijuana law, so we'll. We'll be revisiting that, this, you know, time available. But um, you know, we'll have to have a good discussion on it.
Yep.
And one final announcement, I s- I think I sent you or I left you a handout about uh this planning for COVID economic recovery. Some of, it's going to be an event that's set up in South Farms in Morris, Connecticut. If you're available from uh seven to eight thirty, it'll probably be kind of a fun event. You'll see other commission members from around the area there.
And what date is that?
That just.
It's next week.
Yeah, here we go. I think you sent an email out. I think everybody's having a fun year. That's South Farms, uh.
It's a horse.
Yeah, I think it'd be kind of interesting for us to go there just to see how that's working out, because that's kind of an agritourism kind of situation. And we have some interest from some of our farmers to be able to do some other things. And we'll have to write a regulation to accommodate that.
Yep.
So it might be good to see what other towns are doing. Okay.
Okay. All right, we're good?
We're good.
Good.
All right, the time is eight forty-seven. Moving on to agenda item number seven, adjournment.
I'm going to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
So, thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good night.